Yes, hi everyone. My name is Emily Myers. I am a scientist and Parkinson's disease researcher at the University of Washington here. I'm also an executive board member with my union, UAW 4121, which represents over 5,500 employees, graduate students and post-docs here at the University of Washington. I do have to leave immediately after this, so I am so sorry and I am so glad you all are here. I do live right down by Guanacos, so if you see me walking around with my little dog at some time, you know, I walk twice a day around here, please stop us and say hi and please say hi to my dog Panini because he is very needy. But yeah, I would love to stay and chat with you. My campaign manager is going to stick around and answer any questions that you may have for our campaign. And I just want to say thank you and please check out my website. It is emilyforseattle.com. Thank you.
Thank you. So under time, that's brilliant. Ms. Tuttle, would you like to take the mic?
Hi, I'm Kathy Tuttle. I'm going to be leaving a little bit early too, but I'm here for the next half hour. And my campaign manager will be here through the end of the meeting. And please check us out. I did want to mention my endorsements, just in case I didn't get to do a closing statement. That's the 46th District Democrats, council members Richard Conlin and Tom Rasmussen, Alan Durning, Heather Trim, Ed Lazzowska, Jerry Large, Arvia Morris, Inga Manskoff, and a lot of other wonderful community people. That's because I've been working in community for the last three decades. I worked for the Parks Department. I put in 40 parks and community centers as a planner and project manager. I've worked for the Seattle Planning Commission, and I've started nonprofits. I'm a person that's really good at talking to people and building community coalitions and getting things done. And I'd like to get things done in this community. And I'm, the more I'm talking to you, the more I'm seeing that I'm on that side of saving the Ave. So let's talk more about that too. Kathy Tuttle.
Brilliant, thank you.
Hi, I'm Heidi Stuber. I'm not leaving early, but I did come in a little bit late. Thank you all for your patience. I'm so excited to be amongst small business people here today. I'm a small business leader. I have been for many years. And I came just off a classic small business emergency in property management, which is an alarm going off and knowing, no one knowing what the security code was. So that's why I was late today. I run a small business. I have about 15 employees. I'm raising a special needs child and I'm running a campaign. And I'm able to do all those things successfully because I'm somebody that gets things done. I'm very effective. I work hard. I know how to prioritize. And I'm running because I want to see Seattle change for the better. I think we can do a better job addressing the big issues facing us like affordability, homelessness crisis, climate change, and our schools. And I want to see the next city council member create a more livable, affordable, and sustainable city right now and for the next generation. Thank you.
Brilliant. Thank you.
So going everybody, my name is Sean Scott. I'm also not leaving early. It's something I don't have in common with Rob Johnson. You know, I used to be the editor of, is that good? Used to be the editor of Real Change News. So the conversations that a lot of people have and deep concerns that people have about what we're going to do to house the homeless and also build a more inclusive city that is not a city that is rife with rampant displacement is one that I saw up close a lot of times as editor of that paper. And so for me, I'm looking forward to a very robust discussion, hearing from as many community partners, longtime residents of the university district as possible, about what it is that we need to do to make District 4 as inclusive a district as it can be and make Seattle a city that goes into the future but doesn't leave behind a lot of the things that made us special getting to this point. So look forward to a great discussion. Thank you for attending, everybody.
My name is Alex Peterson. I will be here for the rest of my life because I live just a few blocks away. And it's great to have a forum focused just on the university district. It's really the heart of this Seattle City Council district that we're all running for. And it's really a special place. I've knocked on the doors in every precinct in the U District. And it's a neighborhood, as all of you know. It's a special neighborhood. City planners down at City Hall view it as an urban center or a transit hub. But those of us who live here know that it's a special neighborhood with the small businesses that we all cherish and we want to preserve. So I was doorbelling today. I've knocked on the doors of 12,000 voters already in the district because we've got to be that responsive district council member. And I was in View Ridge today and I met somebody named Patricia. And what she said is what I hear from residents throughout. They want somebody who's going to listen to them. They want a council member who's actually going to listen.
I hate to cut you off.
That's okay. We'll talk more.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joshua Newman. I live in the Ravenna neighborhood with my wife and our four kids. I was a lifeguard, a preschool teacher, and for the last 13 years, a union engineer at Boeing. I've coached my kids' baseball teams. I've served on the board of our synagogue. And I've been the president of my neighborhood community council up in Maple Leaf and the president of a transit advocacy group, Seattle Subway. When I moved to Seattle 20 years ago, I lived just around the corner on 11th and 52nd and remember driving, riding my bike by the University Heights Center and right before it was repainted. It's been 20 years. I haven't moved far. I love Seattle. I remember Seattle the way it was in 99 and 2000, and I know that our future can be just as bright even as we cope and deal with the growth and manage for climate change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Mountser. Wanted to welcome you all to University Heights tonight. I'm the board chair and have been on the board here since 2012. I may not have knocked on your door, but I've probably met a lot of you through the volunteer work that I've done in this neighborhood since I lived here, starting in 1994, when I moved into a condo right over there on 42nd and 11th Avenue. And this was my backyard also in terms of walking around and meeting people. But I'm running and I'll introduce myself. I've worked for King County, now work for City of Redmond, have worked on policy issues. My first love and my entree into government was working on affordable housing issues. In fact, I've known John Fox for some 30 years and the Displacement Coalition because that was part of my backstory of how I made that transition from practicing architecture to working for local government. And since then, I've worked on nearly every kind of policy issue.
Excuse me. We're a bit outside.
Oh, I thought it still said 10 seconds. Okay, talk more later.
Hello, everyone. My name is Frank Krueger. I'm really happy to be here because it's the Ave and the U District that brought me to District 4 in the first place. I'm actually born and raised in upstate New York, but moved out here about 15 years ago and started my own business. I'm currently a small business owner, still running that business. But when it came time to find an office, I had to look around the city. And what did I find but the Ave and the U District? How lucky was I? I had a whole office to rent for 500 a month. That rent went up to 1,200 and then it went up to 1,400 and I had to move out. My office is now over in Freelard. So displacement of small businesses is very important to me, and I can't wait to help work with all of you to make sure that we keep this place stable for small businesses and that we also grow it outside of the Ave and don't ask the Ave to take on too much of a burden. I hope to talk more about it tonight. Thank you all.
Hi, my name is Ethan Hunter. And since moving to Seattle 11 years ago, I've seen so many neighborhoods in Seattle change and not always for the better. I've gone to Seattle Public Schools and I've seen firsthand how differently some minorities have been treated in our public schools. I also know what it's like to go to school with the risk that one day maybe I could be the victim of a next school shooting. I think a lot of people here, including myself, are unhappy with the current council. But what I see for the future of Seattle and for the next city council is a real opportunity to lead on things like climate change, affordable housing, dealing with our homelessness crisis, and helping those addicted to drugs get the help they need. What I'm asking for you is to vote on August 6th for more compassion and a new leader in city council. Thank you.
Brilliant. So, actually, hold on to it. Thank you. So, last but not least, I would like to introduce Laurel. She is, oh, actually, oh, she is a campaign manager for Sasha Anderson, who unfortunately cannot be with us because she is working right now.
Hi there. I'm so honored to be here tonight representing Sasha Anderson. As we said, she can't be here tonight. She's working for Big Brothers Big Sisters. I wanted to start off though by asking a rhetorical question. You don't have to raise your hand. How many of you have unfriended somebody?
A little bit closer.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Rhetorical question. How many people here have unfriended somebody on social media because of differing politics? Or maybe, maybe, I don't know, have, maybe a local coffee shop preference? You know, my grandma had a saying, "If you're in polite company and you want to keep it that way, don't talk about politics." It used to be that we could avoid polarizing subjects by just not discussing them. But these days, that's just not possible with our connectivity and social media and always being with other people. How many of you?
Hello, Laurel. I hate to cut you off. You're out of time.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, one minute, Steve. Anyway, awesome. Thank you very much for being here. So here's what we're going to do. See this little thing I have right here? This, this is transparency, folks. Just like we hope City Hall will be transparent if one of these guys gets elected. So.
What kind's your gallus?
Oh, my bad. So that was a spoiler alert. So this is for community questions. So unfortunately, I cannot play the living tribunal right now. So I'm just going to ask all of you some questions from our community co-sponsors. Each of you will get a minute. And if, yeah, if you would like to answer, just raise your hand and I will call on you. All right. So the first question comes from University Park Community Club. The question is, "What is your opinion about public restrooms at or near major transit stations, specifically near the U District station?" You would like to take that up? Yeah, right. One minute.
I think an important thing that we have to address with our homelessness crisis is the fact that we have a lack of restrooms throughout this city, especially 24/7 restrooms. Now, the U District is very special because we have the urban rest stop here, and it's a program that has demonstrated that the community needs it. People need a place that they can get to in the morning, get cleaned up, and leave. So when it comes to the question of whether we should have restrooms at the station itself, which is also by that stop, I still agree, yes, but it doesn't need to be the full rest stop thing. We can have just our standard hygiene facilities, and I would like to make sure that they are, that they stay open definitely during the operations of the transit, but more ideally 24/7 so that we have these facilities for everyone. I'm always worried that that urban rest stop is going to go away. We can't have just one. We need multiples of these things around town. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Kathy.
So I go to the bathroom about, I don't know, four or five times a day. I think we need bathrooms. I mean, you know, public bathrooms are something that are important, not just for people who are homeless, not just for people who, you know, have special needs. We all need, you know, that my kids have that book, you know, everybody goes. I mean, we have to, this makes a much more livable city. We need more public benches. We need more drinking fountains. We need more bathrooms. We need to have a city that is actually accommodating all of us. And, you know, keeping public bathrooms out of, out of the public right of way is not serving any of us. So yes, we do need bathrooms around stations, absolutely.
I would agree. I think that the question of public space, who owns it, who is going to be able to have control over it in the future, which candidate is most robust and vigorous in their pursuit of maintaining it and growing it, is in a lot of ways a defining question for this election and this election cycle. I think that one of the things, I understand that there are a lot of small business owners and representatives of small business here, one of the things that we would really need to see to help stimulate a lot of small businesses in the city and in the district in specific is a culture of people getting out and walking, pedestrian-centric culture, a culture where people feel enabled to actually explore public space on foot as opposed to only on their cars. I think that we would also like to see something like a policy like commercial rent control in the city so that a lot of small business owners who are at risk or are fear of being displaced maybe have some of those fears mitigated. But as far as public restrooms are concerned, I think it really does speak to a real philosophical concern about making sure that we have a city that's as accessible to everyday people as possible. So yes, to public restrooms.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, to me, this seems like a no-brainer. Obviously, we need public restrooms. As the new U District light rail station is going to be coming here, there's going to be hundreds of thousands of more people commuting through this area each year. More people will be walking along the Ave, shopping in our small businesses. So it makes absolute sense to have a restroom there for people to use. I also like to, my previous candidates mentioned about the homeless. The homeless need a place for those who are on the streets to be able to use the restroom, have a hygiene facility, clean themselves up. So to me, why we would even be discussing this is beyond belief, actually. Thank you.
Brilliant. And kudos, you're under time. All right. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Joshua Newman. Yes, we do need public restrooms, especially in our transit centers. I've been that dad rushing his young child off to a restroom or buying a cup of coffee I hadn't planned to in order to use the private restroom. Actually, I was that dad yesterday. But the, there is a challenge. It's not quite a no-brainer because public restrooms do need to be maintained and they cost money. Most of us probably remember the interesting but ill-advised experiment with the automated restrooms downtown. They didn't quite work out. So we will need a plan to fund the operation and maintain those public restrooms. We need to figure it out. Maybe the solution is to have a public-private partnership with the city maybe doing ownership and the local business community, just a suggestion, but managing it in some way to meet the expectations of the local community. But the logistics of having a public restroom are not straightforward, but we can figure it out.
Oh, thank you very much. And last before we move on to the question? No? Okay, so moving on to the next question. This one's actually very interesting. So this comes to us from our very own Seattle Displacement Coalition. Do you currently, do you support a measure currently understated by the State Council to require developers to pay impact fees for new infrastructure for schools, transportation and transportation parks? And also to clarify, impact fees would be a fee that will be applied to any new development in order to address any displacement issues? Yep. So in that case, just quick clarification. Yeah. Sorry, just want to make sure I didn't spark off a lively debate here. Anyway, so why don't we start from this direction since you were second last? All right. So again, the question is, "Do you support a measure currently understated by the council to require developers pay impact fees for new infrastructure for schools, transportation, and parks?"
I do support the measure by the council. I think it's time that we have more proper planning and as developers and people building the buildings who are going to be making profits, they're the ones that need to be paying these impact fees for these new developments that are going in. And again, I'm under time, but yes, I do support the current measure by the council.
Brilliant, thank you.
Yes, I like the idea of an impact fee specifically because it addresses the issue of small businesses versus large businesses. I don't want to put an undue burden on small businesses any more than we're already suffering through already in this city. But I should say that I do have a small problem with that. It's that it's a one-time fee at the time of development. As we all know, these buildings have a recurring fee, not just a maintenance fee, but an infrastructure cost around the city and around the neighborhood that it's in. I would rather see something more like head taxes and more progressive taxes that are long-running rather than this one-time thing that's not going to fix anything. It's a short-term solution, but it's a solution in the right direction. Thank you.
Great. Well, I think this is a really good question, and it goes to the heart of who's paying to provide, whether it's amenities like parks, or I would call those necessities, but schools and other facilities and those sorts of things. One of the books I think I gave away to Bill Bradberg when he was running a number of years ago was a study about California and how they do impact fees. Let me just say, most cities do charge impact fees for schools. They don't come anywhere close to paying for the new classrooms that you need. And the same thing you should recognize about all impact fees. The one concern that I have is the burden is being put only on the new housing coming into the area. I was one who thought, just segueing into mandatory housing affordability, that really the tax that ought to be there is on new commercial development, which drives the need for housing. Matching up what you're going to tax in terms of what comes to be paid for it is very important, and I think we need to get it right.
We clearly need to have some kind of development, some kind of impact fee on development. You can see what happens when there's not enough. When you go into North Seattle or into Southeast Seattle, where developers in the 1950s and beyond weren't required to build sidewalks. And as a result, we're stuck with large swaths of the city now that simply don't have sidewalks. So the expectation the new developer, the new development contributes immediately to the city and to the community is reasonable and is kind of part and parcel of growing in the city. However, we also know that when you raise the costs of a project, fewer of those projects are going to happen. And it's also going to price out some of the smaller developers, like developers that I've worked with and that I know from personal experience, that they will be challenged to do projects on their own. So we need to strike a balance. We do need to provide funding for the long run, and we do need to expect engagement now.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, we should charge developer impact fees. They're authorized by Washington state law. There are 70 other cities in Washington state that charge them. They're charged throughout the United States, but they haven't been done in Seattle. And I've got a lot of experience in the private sector as in addition to my public service, working for the Department of Housing and Urban Development and working for city council here in Seattle. And the developer impact fees are needed for schools, sidewalks, fire stations too, as well as parks. And developers, I think, will pay their fair share. They just need policymakers, city council members who have the courage and financial acumen to institute them correctly. The mandatory housing affordability fees that have just been enacted have to be balanced with those. We have to recognize there's a cumulative impact, but I think, yes, we should have these.
Well, I'm proud to have worked as a field organizer for former city council candidate John Grant. He was somebody who supported impact fees. I support them as well, in particular where impact fees do not serve as a disincentive to the kind of affordable housing development that I think a lot of young people, a lot of renters, need in this district. I think that it's also the case that impact fees, as was pointed out earlier, are not necessarily a sustainable revenue solution. Business cycles come and go. Cycles of housing production, especially with as many luxury developers as we have, come and go according to the business cycle. But one thing that doesn't come and go is the need for transit, the need for schools. So one of the things that we've talked about in the course of this campaign is actually having a speculative real estate tax, which disincentivizes developers from building large towers that are not affordable to actual working people in the city and letting them go vacant. We've talked about having a land value tax, which I think would serve the same purpose. So I would say yes to impact fees with the caveat that it's not a disincentive to housing affordability and yes to more sustainable revenue.
Thank you.
I was doorbelling in East Fremont this weekend, and I think I heard developers come up from every single door I knocked on. And I was really surprised because density can be kind of a divisive issue in our district. But one thing we agree on is that we can ask more of developers. We want to ask them to replace trees they, they cut down. We want to ask them to include more parking on site. And I think we can absolutely ask them to pay into building the infrastructure around the areas where they're developing to benefit us all. As a mom, I know that our schools are deeply underfunded here in Washington state. Impact fees will not get us where we need to be fully, but every little bit helps to keep our schools healthy and to keep our parks kept up as well. So yes, I support these.
As I'm doorbelling, I often have people tell me they have Libby fatigue, that they don't want, you know, that they feel like they're good people, but they don't know that they can put out more money for the libraries, for the parks, for the schools, for all of the things that we're asking people to pay money for. I think this creates a lack of trust in government, and I think it makes people cynical about any new proposals for, for actually just taking care of basic needs. So absolutely, yes, I think we have one of the most regressive tax systems in the, in the country. I don't know. It's terrible, but we need to actually get some money from developers, and impact fees seem like a reasonable way of doing it. Kathy Tuttle.
Awesome, thank you. So the next question, we'll just go from Kathy down. So what is your, oh, and by the way, this of course comes from the U District Advocates, a shout-out there. What is your strategy to improve community representation on the boards of the U District BIA and the U District Partnership to justify the renewal next year? So again, going from Kathy down. What is your just strategy to improve community representation on the boards of the U District BIA and U District Partnership to justify the renewal, renewal next year?
One of the things I intend to do as your city council representative is to have a person full-time in district who is, is the representative of the district. I think that we, this is something that only one of our city council members, Deborah Juarez, is doing right now, and I think it's necessary to actually work with communities to get what's going on in the communities. And so, yes, I want that person to be, to be the liaison from my office, talking to you to figure out how that University District Partnership can be working with the business association because I want everybody to be fairly represented at the table. Thanks.
Thank you.
Heidi Stuber. I actually didn't know what BIAs were before I started this campaign, and it's something I do know what they are now, but I've had to learn about as I go along. And I think they're, you know, they've, they've been a little rocky in some areas. And I think anytime you have a group of people that's speaking for a greater group of people, you have to be really careful about the representation that's, that's putting forth the voice of the community. So I do believe on all sorts of boards that we need to have it be representative of the people in the area that it's speaking for, needs to have open meetings, needs to make sure people can give input on what the agenda is and what they're putting forth to the city. And absolutely, any city council member has to be in close communication with the local groups and so that they're making sure we're hearing your voices and we're talking to you. Having a local office is absolutely something I'd be committed to as a local representative and being present at many of your local events and so that we know what you need from us as your next city council member.
I think it's the case that candidates campaign as they hope to govern, and certainly the fact that our campaign, or my campaign, I should say, we're in first place for the amount of democracy vouchers that have been received, not only in this individual race, but citywide across 56 city council candidates, is a statement about the fact that we hope to be accountable to the people who are on the ground and not to interest from outside of the city. I think that one of the things that we see with small businesses, I would like to bring more small business owners who are at risk of displacement. I know that we have a lot of businesses that are immigrant-owned, that are POC-owned, that are owned by people of color in District 4. And so I would like to start the outreach process with the people who are most vulnerable with the march to increase commercialization that I think we've seen in Seattle over the last decade and getting them on board because I think it's part of my core philosophy as a council candidate and hopefully as a council member, that when we lift up from the bottom and we talk to the people who are most vulnerable and most at risk, it actually creates a condition where everybody is better off.
So business improvement areas are really important to keep a business district safe and clean, and the BIA in the U District is up for renewal, and I support that renewal. I think that having better representation is, is the key. The University of Washington actually is, is sort of an 800-pound gorilla on, you know, involved in that. And so I think, you know, having more small business representation, as was said earlier, having more community groups have greater say in what's, what's going on. A lot of the businesses here are vulnerable. They rent their space. They're not landowners. So that's what's tough about how the BIA is structured, is you've got landowners and they're prop- their proportions and formulas used, but then at the end of the day, there's some 800-pound gorillas that are making all the decisions. So we need to have better representation, but I think we need to renew it so we can continue the safety and cleanups that are happening, thanks to the U District Partnership.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joshua Newman. The, like Alex was saying, BIAs are a local example of, I mean, the most local level of government we really can have. And therefore, they are critical, and the renewal of the U District BIA would be, is something I absolutely will support. And since we are all, value our American values and ideals of democracy, we want good representation. I'm not, as an engineer, I'm a problem solver. And when I don't understand a problem, or when I'm introduced to a new one, I go and I look for data and I go and I look to understand what's going on. I'll admit that I wasn't aware that there were problems on the representation with the BIA. But one of my strengths is going to get data, interviewing people, talking with those involved and those stakeholders, and developing collaborative solutions. So moving forward, we can absolutely create representation for business owners.
Well, I guess it's true that all politics is local, and there's always some friction on determining what the priorities are, and in particular, in the BIA's case, what are the kind of fees that you're going to charge and how you're going to use those sorts of things. So I've also been hearing murmurings, but I'm not directly involved in the BIA right now. I do think you want as wide a representation as possible, and I'm a supporter of renewing the BIA. I think working together as a community is better than just having individual businesses trying to take care of what are community-wide enhancements, safety, other sorts of issues like that. But I do think bringing everyone to the table, and as folks mentioned, the university and their vision for how the University District functions is, sometimes they are the 800-pound gorilla in the room, so I'd like to see more small businesses, more of the nonprofits that are operating here, and maybe a broadening of what the BIA is focusing their attention on. Thank you.
Frank Krueger. I spent this morning reading this year's meeting minutes from the BIA, because I wanted to understand better what was going on here. And if I can, allow me to read something to you. The BIA describes its work as pertaining to the economic development, neighborhood revitalization, economic vitality, and livability of this neighborhood. That means it goes beyond businesses. It goes into the residential and the people who live in this community. I'd like to actually compliment the BIA on a few things. In their charter, they're required to have a maximum of 35% representation from the school. They're currently at 25%. That's good. We have the public in charge. 80% of them should come from the ratepayers, as they call them, but the tenants are included. We can look at small businesses and large businesses. Look at the distribution of the board, look at the distribution of the neighborhood, and match them. This is easy mathematics. I'm an engineer. We can solve these kinds of problems. I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
So I support the BIA's renewal, sorry. And one of the things that, when democracy is working best, everyone is getting involved. So that means from people to business owners, whether it's a large business or a small business. I want to make sure that especially here along the Ave, where we have a lot of minority and immigrant-owned businesses, that they have a seat at the table as well. So that means bringing them in on the discussion around businesses in the community. What I'll be doing if elected is hosting weekly town halls with people throughout each community, going to different areas of the district each week to hear what their concerns are, make sure that what my agenda in the council is being representative of what businesses and the people are telling me. So really getting everyone involved in the political process is how democracy works best, and that's what I plan on doing. Thank you.
So, in that case, interesting question. So it's a two-part question, courtesy of the U District Small Businesses, excuse me, U District Small Businesses Organization. So, again, I want to reiterate, this is a two-part question, so listen carefully. Do you support signing a check for $2,000 for Cliff Cawdon? Okay, no, I'm not kidding, that's not enough. Okay, cool, you're listening, excellent. So, the first part, do you support removing the Ave from the second upzone of the U District? That's a yes or no question. And then the second part, what will you do to address commercial displacement in the U District? I repeat, do you support removing the Ave from the second upzone of the U District? Yes or no? So it's a yes or no question for first part, and then second part, and then what will you do to address commercial displacement in the U District?
Do we start in the middle?
Yes, of course. Start over here.
So I do support removing the Ave from the second upzoning proposal. One of the reasons why I support that is because I think as we, we're going to be upzoning a lot of neighborhoods in Seattle, and we also want to maintain the sense of history in Seattle. And so that means certain areas, I think, should be exempt from upzones. What I would like to see to really support small businesses in the area is us to, well, actually, the Seattle Historic Preservation Program has identified 125 of 600 landmark areas within the district that they feel should be historically marked. And I think going forward with that plan will really help small businesses in the area so that they're not displaced, especially a lot of these businesses, immigrant and minority-owned, that have been here for so long and are so much of the fabric of our community here in the U District and throughout District 4 in Seattle.
Well, I've already mentioned that I've been displaced out of the U District. Frank Krueger. Yes, I support removing it from the upzoning. We are already at a six-story upzone. The increased upzone was seven stories. And as we all know, walking up and down the Ave, we're really at one or two stories. So we haven't seen the takeover of the skyscrapers just yet, and I think that we can push that off for longer. What I am proud of as a part of the MHA is the development we've done around the avenue. We can't keep expecting one street to carry the full burden of an entire neighborhood. I want to see Brooklyn developed more. I want to see the northern sections of Brooklyn and the Ave developed more. I'd even go more extreme, and I'm a fan of the proposal to make the Ave walkable. We have a lot of problems to deal with how we would route buses around there. We would have to make more use of Brooklyn, but I'm thinking of the far future. Where do we want to see this city go? And we want a walkable retail Ave, and I think that we can achieve that.
So I also support not doing the upzone right on the Ave. As someone pointed out, it's a small change that's being proposed. But I do want to caution people that just not upzoning the Ave is not going to preserve the small businesses that are here. I think it's really going to take much more action in terms of the kind of supports or creative ways that both the BIA potentially works, but also your council member in terms of the kind of zoning conditions. Just because it doesn't get upzoned doesn't mean that you aren't going to have properties redevelop along here, especially with the proximity to the transit center. What we're really talking about, I think, is a much better approach to the kind of design requirements that ought to be along the Ave. And if you've been out to Bothell or other cities in the suburbs who also want to have neighborhoods like the Ave, one of the tricks and the reason you have smaller business owners is having smaller commercial spaces. That doesn't mean you don't let in a Walgreens, but they don't get to have 100, 125 feet along the storefront. It's those kind of design considerations that make a big difference.
Yes, I support removing the Ave from the second upzone. As for supporting the local businesses and working to prevent commercial displacement, there's a number of tools that we need to explore, certainly some type of community foundations. We might be able to explore the idea of mimicking what Pike Place Market has done and creating a foundation that manages even more closely the businesses here and enables and supports those businesses. The idea of a Seattle bank often gets discussed. I'm in full support of that. And being able to provide local, low-priced loans, both to commercial businesses and also to some residents. And then finally, ensuring that the Ave stays a walkable place. Creating a pedestrian plaza throughout the Ave is a lovely idea, certainly creating a pedestrian walkway from the future light rail station to the U-Dot.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes, I absolutely support removing the Ave from the upzone. I stood with the business owners in front of city council months ago, calling for them to remove it from the upzone. They keep trying to put it back in. I hope you join us all in lobbying the city council right now and telling them, keep the Ave out of the upzone. There was a vulnerability study done by Peter Steinbrooke, who's endorsed me in my campaign. 65% of the businesses here are owned by people of color or women. We've got to preserve them. Other things we can do, there's a great program that was started recently, giving legal advice on various issues to business owners, increasing the marketing to encourage people to shop here, and making it a historic district to preserve it.
So I don't actually support exempting the Ave from upzones. I want to be very, very clear about--
Hey, hey, calm down.
--I want to be very clear about why that might be the case. I think at the same time that we need commercial rent control, I've lived in Seattle most of the time for, or in District 4, for about 26 years. I remember when Twice Old, when the Chase Bank on the corner of the Ave used to be a Twice Old Tales. I remember when the Urban Outfitters used to be a Tower Records. And the thing about history, as has been mentioned, is that it moves on. So the real question is whether or not we want to have the city actually be the one to control what that growth looks like. I take a lot of inspiration from one particular aspect of Mayor Nichols's tenureship, which is that when he built, or when he was responsible for overseeing light rail expanding into South Seattle, he went to a lot of the immigrant and POC-owned businesses and said, "We're going to try to find ways to keep you from either not being displaced or giving you certain amounts of reimbursement so you can plant roots again elsewhere in the city." So I would like to see the city move forward cautiously with the upzones, and that's where I stand.
I was like pulling on it. Heidi Stuber. I think small businesses are really important. As a small business leader, I know that there's a lot of small businesses that are helping build the middle class, that are taking care of a lot of employees. And I think, when I think about displacement of small businesses, I don't just think about zoning and rent, but I think about all the stresses that go into small businesses. And I know as someone who's running one, that businesses are getting stretched thinner and thinner in Seattle. There's rising rents, there's rising payroll costs, there's more policies, and even great employers, employers who want to do absolutely the right thing for their employees and pay a minimum wage, a living wage, above minimum wage at my business, because minimum wage is not enough to live in Seattle. They're feeling really stretched thin. And so I think we need to make sure that the people at city council are responsive to small business leaders and are thinking about how these new policies, how they can be phased in over time so that people can absorb them and raise their revenue in step with their expenses so that they can survive. Oh, sorry about that. Yes.
A couple weeks ago, I was knocking on doors in Maple Leaf, and I knocked on a door of Doug Campbell here, of Bulldog News, and I didn't know it was him. He said, "What do you think about upzoning the Ave?" And I said, "Sure, we should upzone the Ave. It's a transit corridor. It's going to be, you know, serving a light rail station." And he pushed back pretty hard, and that was good, because I went and did some research on it, and I found out that it has a lot of historic preservation, it's supporting a lot of arts organizations, it's got a lot of nonprofits, it's got a lot of low-income office space, it has a lot of affordable, deeply affordable housing already. And I think there's a good reason that you're not wanting to upzone the Ave. What I want to say is I'm a council member who can learn. I think that you need to be able to listen to people and look at what's available and actually change your mind. And I have changed my mind about upzoning the Ave.
So, really quick, just to clarify, Kathy, at the end. So, do you support removing the Ave from the second upzone? Yes or no? Just yes or no?
This seems like a double negative. I don't want to upzone the Ave. How about that?
Really? Thank you. Okay, so, in this order, Joshua, Sean, and then Ethan, do you support a historic district designation for the Ave? And go.
Yes. I think that it is a, it might be a very good vehicle to help preserve the character of the Ave, help protect the businesses, and help keep the U District unique. You know, when I moved here, I have very fond memories of all the shops that even have gone, that are no longer here, and that I was able to visit, and all the unique local businesses, right? We can explore a historic district for the Ave, as I mentioned earlier, maybe a Seattle bank, maybe some kind of community trust. These are different solutions, but the goal is to keep the Ave similar to what it is now, right? There will obviously be some evolution, but I don't know, it's a long way of saying yes.
Well, I was actually a student of history at the University of Washington, so I think it would be pretty hypocritical of me to sit up here and say that I don't support a historical district designation on the Ave. So I do support it. I see the, some workers from Magus Books here, and Magus Books was, you know, a bookstore that I think helped to actually stoke my appreciation for history. I think that, provided that we're not, you know, using a historical district designation as a way of not having additional actually affordable housing, additional actual public investment in housing, I would definitely support it. And I think that one of the things that's really missing from our civic discourse, both locally and naturally, is a healthy appreciation for sort of our shared collective past, both the mistakes of it and some of the things that we got right and need to continue into the future. So I would support it for sure.
Brilliant, thank you.
So I do support a historic district designation for the Ave. As I mentioned earlier, the reason why I would want to do that is to really support our small businesses along the Ave, especially immigrant and minority-owned businesses, who will make up so much of our community and are really the fabric of the Ave. As I also mentioned, we're going to be upzoning so much of Seattle as more and more people move here, as Seattle's such a desirable place to move because of our job market. So with that being said, I do want to make sure that some areas in Seattle are protected. And with the history along the Ave, I think it makes absolute sense to designate it as a historical place. Thank you.
All right, brilliant. All right, who's going to be lucky enough to answer this question? What do you think the U-Dot's responsibility should be in promoting a more pedestrian-friendly, affordable district? So, let's see, number six, who will that be? Sean, you are first. What do you think the U-Dot's responsibility should be in promoting a more pedestrian-friendly, affordable U District?
Right, so I would like to see the recommendations of the U District Mobility Group heated. They have called for the pedestrianization of the Ave, and certainly we could have in the Ave a street like we have in Occidental Street and Pioneer Square, a great, you know, thoroughfare for people to go down on game day, grab a beer, go to a coffee shop or something like that. I think that those kinds of street activities and a culture of having people out of their cars, exploring the city on foot, is something that would really be, you know, something very, that would be very, very good. So I would like to see the U District Mobility Group's recommendations about pedestrianizing the Ave implemented into actual policy. I would also like to see a massive investment in actually public housing, not the kind of housing that we have seen go up as a result of some of the less savory aspects of the MHA program, which I think has very much been a developer giveaway of a lot of public space. But I would like to see the city actually do more to build and construct actual public housing, actual social housing.
All right, thank you. Two more folks. All right, number three, let's see. Ah, Beth, okay, you're next. What do you think the U-Dot's responsibility should be in promoting a pedestrian-friendly, affordable U District?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the university being a full participant in the way its surroundings are developing. And of course, they have their own plans in terms of making sure that they're protecting, or not protecting, but making sure that the institution functions well for students and for the whole area. But I'd like to riff off of Sean's notions also in terms of just what's the kind of community we want to have. It's tricky doing urban design, and where do you close down streets and where do you open them up? This gets debated down in the market as well. Small businesses-- Small businesses probably have mixed feelings about whether or not you have a pedestrian mall, or whether you green the whole thing, or whether you have other ways that things are getting delivered. There are alleys around here. I think it's an interesting challenge in terms of how, considering this has been the main corridor for buses to move through, in the future with Link Light Rail, it could probably open up some other ways that we are moving buses through the area and moving pedestrians, bikes, and all the rest of that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Last one up, please. Let's see. All right, who's going to be lucky? All right, let's see. Oh, they're not here. Okay.
We can do much of us.
Let's see, oh, they're not here again. Okay, I know, right? And whoever has been able to speak. Okay. Number four? Oh. Josh, looks like you get another one. What do you think the UW's responsibility should be in promoting a more pedestrian-friendly, affordable U Districts?
Josh Wodiman. The UW needs to be a leader on this. They have been a leader on transportation issues in the past, especially with the U-Pass, and working to reduce the number of car trips to the UW. They can still do better. They could provide a free U-Pass to staff. But they need to be a leader on making the U District and the Ave more pedestrian-friendly, as well as affordable. The U District Mobility Group, their recommendations do need to be heated, and we do need to expand the, both as transit options expand, we need to expand the affordable housing as well as the current market housing that's going up in the U District. Seattle is, the U District is coping with this. All of Seattle is struggling with this. As more market rate housing is built, not everyone can compete in that, and the city and state are going to have to...
Josh, unfortunately, your time is up.
Joshua.
Thank you.
Please.
Oh, Joshua.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. So, next question. What is your plan to create a sustainable and green District 4? Does it interface with the current Seattle Climate Action Plan? And the first one to go first will be... Okay, who is candidate number five? And that will be Alex. Alex, what is your plan to create a sustainable/green District 4, and how does it interface with the current Seattle Climate Action Plan?
Thank you. So I'm glad I'm getting this question. I want to go through my 14-point plan on climate change. First thing we need to do is dump Donald Trump. Dump Donald Trump. Trump's the worst thing we have for climate change right now. We need to implement Jenny Durkan's Climate Action Plan. It's very detailed. We can actually implement it faster. We need to encourage more use of solar power, protect and expand our tree canopy, reduce emissions of our green, to make our fleet green faster. We need to get more people to ride light rail. We're going to have two more stations opening up. We need to renew the supplemental bus service levy, but make the buses better so they work for everybody. Make sure density is focused around transit. Require large institutions to get more people to commute. Expand the city's commute trip reduction program, which has lots of loopholes. Phase out gas leaf blowers with a buyback program. Work more closely with the Port of Seattle to reduce emissions from planes, trains, trucks. Thank you.
All right, time? All right, thank you very much. Okay. All right, let's see, who is next? All right, let's see, who is lucky candidate number three? Oh, okay, Beth again. What is your plan to create a sustainable/green District 4? Does it interface with the current Seattle Climate Action Plan?
Well, as Alex just mentioned, there's a great plan, plan of action that can be executed in this city. One of the other things I've been trying to talk to people about though also is, some of it is the investment in resiliency in this city, looking to the future. We're trying to mitigate as much as possible and lower CO2 or G8 greenhouse gases. But the other thing is thinking about the future and the climate change that is probably coming and is already here. That means thinking about our infrastructure, the water supply in the future. One of the reasons that we're doing combined sewer overflow control projects is because we have more of these flash storms that cause flooding in the neighborhood, or sewer overflows into Lake Union and to Lake Washington. So it's those kind of other things that I would also be looking at in the bottom line in terms of the kind of investments that the city ought to be making to prepare for climate change and to make the city as resilient as possible.
Brilliant, thank you. Candidate number two. Would that be, Ms. Frank? So what is your plan to create a sustainable/green District 4? Does it interface with the current Seattle Climate Action Plan? And go.
Our current action plan is to have an electric bus fleet by 2040, and we are a long way from getting to that bus plan. We need to be more aggressive, not only in purchasing new buses, but selling ours and getting new ones. We already know we have a limit on buses already. That's why we have limited routes throughout the city. This is something that we have to put our money to and to fix that problem. But you know, vehicles are only 50% of the problem. Buildings are another 50%. Right now, we have a tune-up program going around the city where the city will inspect you and give you suggestions on how to make your building more efficient. Right now, this is a voluntary program. Although the group has enforcement powers, they choose not to use them. As a council member, I would choose to have enforcement. No one is going to fix the environment, unfortunately, out of the goodness of their hearts. We have to give them a real reason to, and that means penalties, unfortunately. Let's be aggressive about fixing not just our vehicles, but our buildings.
Excellent. Okay, looking at this question, it is going to be an interesting one. So what is your opinion of the corporate worker slash Amazon tax? Just to clarify, we're talking about the head tax, the employee's hours tax, and let's see who's going to go first. All right, candidate number seven, Ms. Heidi Stuber.
I like this question. The head tax is one of the reasons I ran, actually. I thought as a small business leader, it was the wrong way to move forward. I'm not saying that I don't think big corporations should be a part of the solution to the big problems our city faces. I think they can, but I didn't think that was the right way to go about it. I thought the head tax involved a lot of grandstanding and not a lot of planning on how the money would be used, or how it would be effective for our community. And when I knock on doors, I hear from constituents. I'm not the only one who thinks that. I hear a lot about homelessness. I actually hear a lot about the head tax. And people say, "It's not that I don't think businesses should pay their fair share, but we need to have trust that city council can use the funds effectively, and we need to see the plan for the revenue so that we know where it's going." So I think in the future, if we want businesses to be a part of the solution, I think we have to bring them to the table, and we have to give the voters, more importantly than the business, the voters need to know where that money's going to go and how it's going to be effective to creating housing that is actually affordable and helping people get sheltered.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see who's up next. Oh, sorry about that.
It's easy if we do it out here. Yeah. It's a bit awkward.
Okay, that person's not here. Alex, in that case. Alex, you're up next. What is your opinion of the corporate worker slash Amazon tax?
So I oppose the head tax, but let me go into some detail. You can see why it came about, because we have the states, we have the most regressive tax system in our state, and city council has limited tools. They were trying to address an urgent crisis, homelessness, which is the number one concern that people have when I knock on doors too. And so, but you need to do it right. You need to have a plan. I'm running on accountability. You need to have a plan on exactly how you're going to spend the money. You need to focus on using best practices proven to reduce homelessness. You need to have a system in place. I think the business community wants to get involved. You just saw Amazon put up additional money today. So they want to get involved, and it's the city council's job to prove that we're working, we're using effective programs, we're working with King County where there's mental health and drug dependency dollars. We need to have, show them that they can trust to put their money in city council's plans.
Okay, brilliant, thank you. Okay, in that case, our last choice, who will it be? Okay, let's see, five and seven are out. Ooh, Frank, it's back to you.
Wonderful. Hi, everyone, Frank Krueger. I'm going to be pro-head tax. That's because we've already mentioned that we need, we have regressive taxes, and we need a progressive tax. This summer, we're all going to vote for a library levy. And I'm saying you're all going to vote for it because we're good people, and we know that the library provides social services throughout this city. But this shouldn't be, we shouldn't be relying on levies for this. This should be a part of our general fund. We should have the money to pay for these basic social services. I am pro-head, thank you, I am pro-head tax. I even want to push it farther. I have places where we can put that money. I have an ambitious program. Let's hire 1,000 social workers. It's a huge number. It's crazy. But let's think about how that would change things. We know that the homeless aren't helped without personal care, personal attention. We know that we are understaffed. Let's solve the problem in one big, bold move, and to do that, we need money. Thank you.
Brilliant, thank you very much. Okay, okay, so, little disclaimer with this one. In the future, please make all of your questions legible, because there are two words that I cannot read here, but I do, I know the gist of the question. So, no, shouting out those two words. So, the community member writes, "I am concerned about parking in the U District. Currently, new apartments are not required to provide parking for tenants or to offset the absence of street parking, and it has eliminated street parking. So what would you do about parking issues in the U Districts?" And the first... Let's see, okay. So Beth, you go first.
I think this is one of the things I was talking about. We were all at a forum last night as well. Parking issues, I think, are, it's part of our transition period here. We're probably always still going to have some single occupancy vehicles, but those of you who've worked or tried to build something, with each parking space costs at a minimum $60,000 to go into a building. There are places where they're probably needed, recommended. My stance is the market ought to determine where that is. Places where you're building small units right next to transit, you probably don't need all the parking spaces. But I can tell you, in the city of Redmond, we're right now doing an analysis of what is the parking availability in the downtown where there's going to be a new transit station? What is the demand? Not everyone can go without a car, we get that. But on the other hand, the slavishness of the only way we're going to be able to get around is by a car, is not looking to the future of what we need in our communities in terms of more diverse transportation. Thanks.
Okay, that was interesting language. All right, so, let's see, who's going to go next? All right, cool. Mr. Scott.
All right. Thought you were holding out on me.
Hey, don't worry.
So this is, I think this is a really complicated question in a lot of ways, with a lot of components to it. I think if it's the case that so many people have been displaced from the city of Seattle and have been forced to lead more car-dependent lifestyles as a result of a lot of the unaffordable development that we see, I think it's actually unfair for a lot of developers to then get away with not providing any additional parking. I also understand the other part of it, and certainly as a candidate who's been endorsed in this race by the Sierra Club, I understand that we want to get away from a situation where we're dependent so much on cars, so that I think a good middle ground solution, while we're trying to build that grand car-free future where people don't have to travel long distances from home to work, is to actually have some of our larger developers be on the hook for providing additional parking, but to have a lot of that be underground where possible, in particular for a lot of the developers that are more resourced, so that we are simultaneously able to do two things. Number one, alleviate, provide more free space, or more public space on our city streets, and B, provide the parking that we need underneath those units.
All right, so I rolled seven. And Ms. Stuber, you are up next. Again, the question about street parking. What would you do about parking issues in U Districts?
Well, this is an issue, like some issues, that I don't have a tremendously strong opinion about either way, but what I do bring to this race is somebody who believes in balanced solutions. I think often the right thing to do isn't one of the extremes, get rid of all parking, make sure parking exists on streets as it does now forever, but that the right answer falls somewhere in between. I agree that developers should, more should be asked of developers, as I said earlier. I think even in some of the big multifamily units, it's probably not needed if it's close to transit that there's a parking space for every single unit, but having some that people can pay for within the development makes sense. I also think we have to think about how we're going to phase out parking over time as public transportation use increases, and we need to have space for dedicated bus lanes particularly. So I think, what do we need right now? A lot of people are still commuting by car. In five years, it's going to be less. In 20 years, we need to have very few people commuting by car. And so we need to phase out parking over time, but there's still a place for some of it right now.
Stuber, thank you. Okay, so Ethan, we've not heard from you for a while. So, there's no question. I'm going to, I'm going to try to be as clear about this as possible, because there are a couple side notes written on here. So, how will you prevent the displacement of critical services due to development or the closure of churches, such as Roots Emergency, Roots Youth Emergency Shelter, needle exchange sites, childcare? Okay, and other social service organizations?
So, an important question. I think it's a real responsibility of the city council to make sure that we have services throughout our city for everyone who needs help. So that means for youth who might be homeless or displaced, getting them the help that they need, working with churches, local small businesses, to really make sure that they're doing their part in helping the community. For those that have mental health issues, I think statewide, we really need to look into reopening mental health institutions, which were closed quite a while ago, and has caused a real problem, especially with a lot of homelessness in Seattle. So I think real responsibility that the city has, if we're serious about being compassionate towards a lot of our citizens, and doing everything that we can to make sure that a lot of these services are retained in future budgets, and then expanding on them going forward.
Awesome, thank you very much. So, let's see, who gets next? Oh, yeah. A team that works together wins together. All right, number one.
Get to go again.
You. Yeah? This is fun. Okay. Otherwise, you would have got a second shot at that. All right. So, Ms., sorry, Mr. Scott, the question for you. How would you prevent, how will you prevent the displacement of critical services due to development/closure of churches, services such as the Roots Youth Emergency Shelter, needle exchange sites, childcare, and other social service organizations?
Right, so, one of the things I think we have to realize is that the reason why the not-for-profit sector, the reason why many members of our faith community, the reason why so much of the private sector has had to assume as much of responsibility as it has in recent years and in recent decades for providing these social services, is because there's been a real recession or an abdication of the responsibility that government has towards providing those services. And so at the same time that many of our community members are big-hearted enough to pick up a lot of that slack, I also think that we should not have to be working so hard as a community as far as filling the void that government formerly used to. So that I would like to see a safe consumption site open somewhere north of the Ship Canal Bridge. I would like to see the expansion of the city's Community Service Officer Program, which was recently instated. That's 400 unarmed officers that are on the streets directing houseless and homeless folks to services and to housing. And I would also see, like to see progressive revenue solutions to pay for it, so that it doesn't necessarily have to come out of our property taxes, so that it doesn't have to come out of regressive sales taxes, so that...
Okay. All right.
That's the first one answered.
Okay, so Joshua, it's down to you. All right, so same question. How will you prevent displacement of critical services due to development/closure of churches and services such as Roots Emergency Shelter, needle changes, childcare, and other social service organizations?
I also want to tie it to the national and state level inequality that we've been experiencing. We know that because of our regressive tax structure, both at the federal and state level, corporations and the wealthy have not been paying their fair share for the last 40 years. And that is why mental health facilities have closed. That's why we're looking to the, our police department, our fire department, to address people who are in a mental health crisis on the street. It is an abdication of the overall community from providing to the needs of those who are less fortunate and are struggling. When we look at, uh, the services that are being offered by our faith-based communities, we need to be able to fill some of those roles by the city, especially regarding housing, especially regarding, uh, shelters and transition housing and emergency housing, uh, as well as housing support. Uh, as for a lot of, many of the other services, we can continue to support and fund them, uh, as we have done now, and we can expand it as well.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, this one's interesting. Let's see. The question is, "How would you compensate or mitigate for the loss of backyard habitat for birds, including shrub layer and other plants due to denser zoning?" Okay, flora and fauna. Okay, let's do this. Okay, so, Frank?
Flora and fauna?
Yeah.
Alright. Probably the most interesting thing that I learned on this campaign was just how passionate people were about the trees in Seattle. It was pretty uplifting, to be honest. I thought I was the only tree hugger out there. So let's start with a tree offset fund. Anytime that we're going to cut down a big tree, we're going to have to pay into a fund. We're either going to have to replant that tree, or we're going to have to make sure that tree gets planted somewhere else in the city. That second option may sound a little weak to you, but I'm very excited about it, because Seattle does not have good coverage throughout the city. We are very lucky here in District Four to be in a very beautiful neighborhood, but not everyone else is so lucky due to past mistakes on zoning and just sheer incompetence. So let's fix the past. Let's have a tree offset fund, and let's consider, um, other opportunities for the trees, as in, um, uh, purchasing trees for families who can't afford them. Large trees are often very expensive. Let's help out.
Frank, thank you very much. As I say, no offense to everyone here, but just so you know, District Two, we have the gardens. I know, right? Sounds like, alright, uh, let's see. Who was next? Alright, Beth?
Oh.
Montseer, so how would you compensate or mitigate for the loss of backyard habitat for birds, shrub layer and other plants included, due to denser zoning?
Yeah, so, I, I think Frank gave a great answer. I mean, the usual strategy is to do two-for-one replacement in areas and so on, and I think you capitalize on the areas that you do have and be adding more in the way of shrubbery. I learned a new thing the other day, did you know? In most places where you have street trees and those sorts of things, they really only last like seven to 10 years, and so you're constantly, or sometimes longer than that, replacing those. But I realized this question was really about the greenery that you find in, you know, probably more single-family neighborhoods. I think there are ways that you can do good design, good landscape design, and maintain that kind of greenness on projects. That's part of the idea of clustering housing and leaving open space or places where you can have that kind of amenity, or in this case, you know, areas that really make it more quality of life. It again, comes back to sort of the design, the finer points of what needs to go into both zoning and the design requirements, so that we maintain a quality of life.
Thank you very much. Alright, alright. Last person to answer this. Who's it gonna be? Who's it gonna be?
Just toss it.
Oh, okay, they're not here. Okay. Okay, they're not here again. See, this is what happens when people leave early, like Rob Johnson.
Call back.
I know, right? Okay. Alex, it's down to you. So how would you compensate or mitigate for the loss of back, uh, backyard habitat for birds and clean, uh, or shrub layer and other plants due to denser zoning?
Well, I think we need to prevent the removal of trees. We need to start with preventing the removal, because they, the bigger trees are much more valuable for reducing climate change and these little sticks that developers put in after they build something new. And so, there is a tree ordinance that's being considered now, and we need to make sure that it's tough, that it has teeth and protects the big trees. I want to use my time to actually correct something I said earlier. I referred to the University of Washington as an 800-pound gorilla earlier. I just want you to know, I didn't mean that in a negative way, I just meant that they are, have big influence. It's more like an 800-pound teddy bear. But, but we do need to preserve the trees, and I, I hope that the city council, if they don't complete the tree ordinance, I would like to take a major part in making sure it's very strong and protects the beautiful, exceptional trees that we have in our city. Thank you.
Very much. So, this question is interesting, because I'll actually have to roll the dice for this one. This is fun, love it. So, um, please raise your hand if you're in support of some form of socialism.
It's all socialism. Public schools.
That's right. Okay, anyway, uh, cool. So, uh, just keep your hands high, I'll say this again. Um, just raise your hand if you're in some support, uh, support in some form of socialism.
I support some socialist policies.
We basically live in it.
Oh, hold on, in that case, uh, who, wait, hold on. Whoever, um, wrote that question, you can ask them, uh, what form of socialism, uh, they support, because some of you are identified socialists, and some of you support some socialist policies. So again, our candidates will be around at the end of the forum, just so you know. So, anyway, next question.
Who asked the question, so we can go talk to them?
You know what? I would like to know what's saying, so I could go talk to them. We can organize together, you know? Like, get some real people to move in here, go on here. So, uh, next question. Would you encourage enforcement of, oh, wow, this, this is going from the far left to the far right, okay. Um, so, "Will you encourage enforcement of current park laws, such as no encampment, no drugs, no graffiti, et cetera? Or would you rather change laws and allow current, the current activity?" Interesting. So, uh, let me just roll the dice. Oh, sounds so much far right, it's center, right? It's like, um, CNN's Fox News, I guess? Okay. Let's see, that person's not here. Okay, so, Joshua, it's down to you. So, "Will you encourage the enforcement of current park laws, such as no encampment, no, no camping, no drugs, no graffiti, et cetera? Or would you rather change the laws and allow the current activity?"
Josh Newman, I, I don't think the situation is, I guess, quite as black and white as the question produces it. First off, it is the pri, it is, must be the priority of local government to provide public safety. That's, that has to be its first priority. But that is public safety for homeowners visiting the park, and it is public safety for individuals who are experiencing homelessness, or are coping with a mental illness, or struggling with drug abuse. They deserve safety as well. They're our fellow neighbors in the city. So, when we're talking about, uh, enforcing the rules in the park, yes, I, I don't believe that people should be allowed to camp in the park. But they're in the park because they have nowhere else to go. Our society has failed them. We haven't built enough homes in King County. We haven't provided the services that they need. So first, we need to provide them somewhere to go, a safe, secure, sanitary location, and then we can enforce the rules.
Again, thank you. Alright, Stewart, this is one. One. Okay. Okay. Sorry, crouching, my friend. Okay. Josh, oh, Josh, can you ever spoke? Sorry, no double dipping, folks, okay? You're not here. Quick, someone raid a Dungeons and Dragons game. I think we might have an emergency, please die. Okay, nope. You know, even imagine the gathering game will do. Okay, who? Number three? Okay, that will be Miss Montseer. Uh, yes, "How will you encourage enforcement of current park laws, including no camping, no drugs, no graffiti, et cetera? Or would you rather change laws and allow current activity?"
I think my answer is similar to Frank's, but maybe slightly different. I mean, there, there are not enough places for people to go. We have failed people in terms of the homeless situation that we have in the city. And I think until we have enough housing that we can house everyone, we're going to be, um, finding as many alternatives, and that probably includes, um, tent encampments, but not necessarily in the parks. Um, I have a real concern, I hear from my neighbors and talk to people around the city also about the concerns of encampments, especially where people are using drugs, and it's right next to our playgrounds and areas where there are children and so on. I do think, though, that we ought to be taking some of the encampments that are working and making those into sanctioned encampments. They ought to be supported with hygiene services, garbage pickup, and all those other sorts of things. There aren't enough places. But I think we also need to be focused on, how are we going to get people off the streets?
Miss Montseer?
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay. Last person to answer this. Who will it be?
The road.
Okay, and, ooh, Frank? It's your lucky die.
Yes.
Hello, everyone, Frank Krueger. This is a tricky one. I live by Gasworks Park, and let me start by saying, we do have to have rules, and we have to have an acceptable, acceptable line of behavior and what's not acceptable. We have to draw that line. When it comes to encampments, we've decided that we won't allow them, and I actually support that. Gasworks Park used to be full of tents, and it's no longer that way. We have to say no to needles on the ground. Basic safety like that for our children needs to be enforced. But with all that said, I worry about two draconian laws in our parks. In 2017, a gentleman was heating himself by a fire. The police were called, uh, an argument, God, an argument happened, knife was drawn, and that gentleman end up, ended up dying that night. It was a tragic case, where our overzealous ambition to have perfectly clean parks cost a person their life. This treads on police de-escalation, but it also means that we ourselves have to be a little bit more tolerant as neighbors.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, in the name of transparency, running a bit out of time, so I picked three hotline questions from the community, and, uh, speaking of police, this next question focuses specifically on the SPD. So recently, the SPD were found not to be in compliance with a consent decree. Uh, knowing, uh, knowing that, today, if you were on city council today, would you vote for the SPD contract? Oh, yeah. It just got reeled in. Yeah, okay. Oh. Mr. Scott? It's on you.
So, up to this, uh, point, I have actually been the only candidate in this race to forthrightly say that I would not have so, supported, uh, the SPAG contract. Uh, the SPAG contract, the Seattle Police Officers Guild contract, was, um, deemed a disaster for police accountability by no less than two dozen community groups, including, uh, the Seattle Police Commission, um, and the ACLU, an organization that's not exactly known for their radical stances on many matters. And so I would side with those two dozen community groups in saying that we needed to have, uh, much deeper accountability measures, um, with respect to the Police Officers Guild contract. I also think it's the case that we are asking our police officers to do too much. I actually agree with our police chief in saying, when she said, that we're not going to be, going to be able to arrest our way out of the homelessness issue, so that I would like to see the expansion of a community service officer program, um, so that we have, uh, police officers that are able to go to the homes of people like Charlene Wiles, who was killed in our district. Um, and hopefully, a program such as that would have saved a life, so I would not have supported the contract.
Thank you very much. Alright, who's next on this question? Okay, that was eight. Okay, come on, one through seven. Oh, no, Sharon already went.
I can keep going.
Yeah, I was about to say, I might want to add some words, too. Okay.
Was me? Oh.
Oh, it's Montseer, okay, hey, you want to roll, let's roll.
Yes, I did, I did say, just roll.
Yeah, right?
Um, you know, I have to say, I'm not an expert at all on the contract, hadn't read it. I've learned something from Sean as we've been doing these forums of how many people opposed it, it wasn't an issue that I was tracking. That being said, I just want to change the focus slightly of, we have a current problem right now of just even hiring police officers. We have a shortage across the city. It's affecting their ability to actually deliver services that we need, the sort of calls and so on. There's been some discussion at these forums about whether or not we need a smaller coverage area. Right now, it's a large area that the police are covering within the North District. I don't think the police are our enemy. I think that consent decree went a long ways, and we already knew it about the inequality and some of the abusive behavior by probably a small number of the police officers, but basically giving them all a black eye. I know we can do better, I don't know the specifics of the contract, but I, um, think we need to continue to put the resources there for community services.
Okay, thank you. Alright, alright. Okay. Last person to answer this, okay. Who do we have going next? Okay. Oh, that was you. Okay. I just love double rolls. Okay. Okay, great. So Joshua? Your last one on this question.
Uh, Josh Newman, um, no, I would not have voted for the contract, and I've said that previously, so have some of the other candidates, especially Emily Myers. Um, the, the contract was a missed opportunity to enforce the compliance decree and negotiate with the, the Police Officers Guild on how they should move forward with, with changing their practices, behaviors, not simply looking at their training, but looking at the economic incentives of their contract that encourage police officers to protect each other when they are violating their oath. The police department is a rep, is the most direct representative of the government that we interface with. And when they use force, an excessive use of force, it is an infringement upon those individuals, but also on all of our American rights. So the police officers must comply with American tradition and the FBI.
Okay, Joshua, thank you. Thank you. To quote Monty Python, "I didn't vote for him." Anyway, well, not you, I mean the police. Anyway, um, yes. So, lots of joke aside, so we're going to change this up a little bit. The question, so, for this next question, we basically ran out of time, but for this next question, for this final question, um, each of you will get 30 seconds. So 30 seconds each, so please be quick. And we're just going to go down the line. Are you ready? Ready for this?
What's your oldest memory of the U District?
So dig deep, boys. I'll tell you what, I'll give you 10 seconds just to think, to, you know, get all warm and mushy, and think of your best friends, or, uh, if you are blessed to have a beautiful fiancee like myself to think of, think of your significant other. So, yeah, no, she's much cooler than I am, she saves people from deportation every single day. Give her a round of applause for our paralegals. Yes. Yes, much quicker. Although I do enjoy being there. Alright, you ready?
What's my earliest?
So, 30 seconds. What is your oldest memory of the U Districts?
Uh, well, probably when I moved here, uh, to Seattle, um, from Palo Alto, California, 11 years ago. Uh, we went, uh, to tour the University of Washington with my sister, and I remember walking along the Ave. Um, so that's the oldest memory I have of the U District. Um, and now, having gotten to live here for the past few years, um, have gotten to make a lot of more memories, uh, here in the U District. Um, so that, I guess the, my oldest one would, though, would be 11 years ago.
Brilliant, thank you.
When I first moved out here, I was an intern at Microsoft, spending all my time in Redmond. I spent three months of the summer in Redmond. Fortunately, I had some roommates that who had a better nightlife than I did, and they made me go out, and we drove across this giant bridge called 520, and it was just as the sun was setting, so you had this beautiful sunset over the, gosh, what, the buildings, the UW Tower, the, uh, the fields, and it was just the most perfect entry into UW and the whole neighborhood, and that's why I put my office here, and that's why I'm staying here in District Four. I fell in love with it that day.
Brilliant, thank you.
Well, as I said, I got here in 1983 to go to grad school at UW, so this was my second home here, and then I actually... And then I actually moved to the district, lived downtown for a while, and then chose to move back to the U District. To me, I have these great memories of just what a microcosm and what diversity there is in this neighborhood. I used to stop at Bulldog News every morning while I was carrying my daughter around in a backpack. She learned to walk on the UW campus. I love that you can walk out your door. And there were theaters, there was ethnic food, there was the UW bookstore, other small bookstores. All great memories.
Thank you very much.
Joshua Newman. I came here on a college recruiting trip, and we walked down from campus and had dinner at the old Tokyo Gardens just out the 45th, and then we walked up to an amazing ice cream place called Marble Top that then got renamed as The Mix and is now gone. It was an amazing experience coming from the far-flung suburbs of Southern California and Northern Nevada and seeing somewhere so rich and vibrant.
Thank you, Joshua.
For me, it was...
I got you. Go ahead.
For me, it was back in 2008. My wife and I brought our son here, he was two years old, and we walked from our home through beautiful University of Washington campus to come to this building, actually, where there was a raging debate about Obama versus Hillary Clinton. And it was the 43rd Legislative District Democrats who were meeting in the basement here. We walked in, and everybody was yelling at each other, and they were so passionate about it, and then going out to eat afterwards, and I think it was Chaco Canyon Restaurant, and going to the library, and there's just so much to do here to walk, that's walkable.
Thank you.
So I actually go back to the fall of 1994, when I was about nine or 10 years old. We had, my dad and I had season tickets to actually watch the Huskies play on Saturday. This was the point in time where the King Dome, or the roof was actually falling at the King Dome, so the Hawks were playing at Husky Stadium as well, so that for a good part of the fall of 1994, we were basically down here every weekend. And, you know, the Huskies were a competitive football team back then, and that's how, you know, that, you know, 1994 was quite a while, quite a while away.
Thank you. Joe Wallace, and your last is...
I think my earliest memory of the U District is I was actually a part of a new moms group here hosted by University Presbyterian Church 14 years ago, and I'm still friends with all the moms in that group. And I have so many memories of living around here and bringing my son into the U District. We used to meet our moms group at Cedars. We continue to eat here. We go, my son loves Araya's and Korean Tofu House. We've played on UW campus. We've played at the fountains down at U Village. I don't know if that quite counts, but there's so many places. You, as an urban family, there's really so many places you can go here, and we still come all the time.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so unfortunately, we are five minutes over time. Sorry, folks, I know you want, want to try it. Beautiful, sounds just like that. That's beautiful. Anyway, oh, please don't get, let me go look at that. So we're going to limit the closing remarks to 30 seconds. My apologies, but 30 seconds each, and also, remember, the roller seat. So, yeah, we'll just start from this tunnel, I'm sorry, Ms. Stuber down at my bulge, and we'll just go down this way. So closing remarks, 30 seconds each, and...
All right, my name's Heidi Stuber. I'm a former environmental science teacher, a small business leader, a single mom, and an autism advocate. I'm running because I think all those different experiences helped me take a big picture, common sense strategy to government, and I think the best solution often is in the middle. And I do believe that we, and I mean the middle of, Seattle middle is very left and middle of the all middle, so the Democratic liberal middle, let me be clear. But I think this city can change for the better, and I believe we need a new voice to do that.
All right, thank you.
So I think one of the really big considerations that's before us, not only in the District Four race, but also in all the city council races that are happening across the city, is whether or not we want to move in the direction of being a city that has very cruel policies or one that is a very caring or compassionate city. For me, I would like to see policies go through that make us a more compassionate city, that's alleviating the tax burden on renters, on students, on homeowners, looking for progressive revenue so that we actually have the resources we need to meet the problems that we have at the scale at which they currently are. So thank you so much for a great discussion.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. Alex Peterson, I believe I've got the experience that we need to solve the key issues facing us like homelessness. I worked at the Department of Housing and Urban Development during the Clinton administration on homelessness. I've worked for the Seattle City Council for Tim Burgess as a legislative aide on affordable housing issues. I've been supporting the U District for over a decade. I'm endorsed by Peter Steinbruck, Nick Locata, Jerry Polet, Ron Sims, and many other, and many businesses here in the U District, so I hope I can count on your support.
As an engineer, I am focused on solving specific problems, and as I've talked about, digging into the details and understanding all the sides of problems. We need to invest in our city and make sure that we plan for the future, a future that includes more people, a future that addresses climate change, and a future that, that, where we can move around the city without cars. We need to plan for this future and implement these changes with bold leadership and bold vision. Joshua Newman.
Thank you.
Beth Mountseer. I mentioned this the other day. I think we're, all up and down the West Coast, all metropolitan areas, we're almost victims of our success in terms of the housing affordability, the homelessness issues, and all those sorts of things. But I think we can solve those issues. I think we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but I think we can get smarter, and I think we can innovate. Seattle has been one of the leaders on that kind of innovation, and I believe we could do it again. I'm one of the people who've been out testing those sorts of things and doing the kind of policy work and programs that can make a difference, and I'd like to do more. Thanks.
Thank you.
Frank Krueger. I hope you've heard from me tonight that I'm an optimist, but I'm also an upstart. I've always believed in working for what you want. When I was given an opportunity to start a company in India, I packed my bags and said, "Goodbye, Seattle." If I have an opportunity to take advantage of something, I will. When I saw my friends were being taken advantage of and being exploited, I started another business to help them get jobs, get their green cards, come into America, and become new citizens. As an engineer, I also want to solve problems, but as a businessperson, I know how to make compromises and get things done.
Thank you, Frank. It's on to you.
In 2020 and beyond, I see a real opportunity for city council and Seattle as a whole to really be a leader on issues like combating climate change, dealing with affordable housing, helping our homeless and most vulnerable citizens. I think it's incumbent upon us in the future to really tackle these issues head-on and be leaders for other cities around the country as what is the best way forward in dealing with some of these crises. So I hope for your vote on August 6th, and thank you for having me.
It takes five votes to move a measure forward on city council. To get the vision that we want for Seattle actually achieved, we need somebody who will work to bring people together, and Sasha Anderson is that person. Sasha's been building bridges in communities her entire career, from the South Sudan, where she built a mentorship program, to right here in Seattle. In fact, that's where she is tonight. She is working with her mentorship program, serving underserved children. We need Sasha on city council, and that's why I hope we can count on your vote this August. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to all, folks, thank you for coming out tonight. Give our candidates a round of applause.